Good evening. Tuesday, July 14th. The purpose of this first meeting will be to reorganize the school committee. We will be electing a new chairperson and a new vice chairperson. I'd like to call the roll call first.
Can I just say my name?
Yeah.
Lori Angers.
Yeah.
William Bishop.
Spiro Thomo.
Martina Shea.
Andrew Murch.
And we have one absent. Could we stand and do the pledge of allegiance, please?
At this point of the meeting, I would entertain a motion for nomination for the position of chairperson for this coming school year.
I'd like to nominate Martina Shea for president for the chairmanship.
Second.
Okay, we have a nomination and we have a second, a motion. Is there anyone else that wants to be nominated for chairperson? Hearing none, I'll take a vote for Martina Shea. Yes, no?
Yay.
Shea.
Yes?
Shea.
Yay.
That's unanimous with one absent. Now, I'd like to entertain a motion for the position of vice chairperson.
I nominate Andrew March.
I'll second that.
I'll second it.
Okay. Can we take a vote on that, please? Yay or no?
Yay.
Yay.
Yes?
Yay.
Yay.
Andrew, congratulations. Martina, congratulations. At this time, before we start the next meeting, I'd like a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
I'll second that. All in favor? Unanimous. We're just going to switch over and put the new leadership in their place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomo.
At 7:00 PM, it's nice to see all of you watching us on television. You've just seen our new members vote for the first time. We've pledged allegiance to the flag already, so I think we can do that. Is there any public input? Is there any public input? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business. Oh, excuse me, the discussion of the minutes. Everyone has the minutes from the March 10th meeting. Hearing none, as those of you who are new members may not realize that we don't even have the power to vote on our own meeting minutes. We do have the right to check them to be sure that they're correct, but we have no right to vote on them, so there will be no vote on this issue. New business. We have a letter from the Tiverton School System about the Corona issue. They're asking us to join them in asking the Department of Education and the state of Massachusetts to fully fund any extra monies needed for the COVID. Changes in the schools, I'm sure we'll be talking about those at a later point in the meeting, but right now, I would like a motion to join Tiverton and other communities in the state asking for the Department of Ed and the state of Massachusetts to fully fund any changes needed for a safe opening this year.
So moved.
Motion?
I'll second that.
And a second. Any discussion? Any questions? All in favor? Opposed?
I'm abstaining. I don't know. Madam Chair, I don't know that we have the, any say in the fiscal responsibilities of the district at this point. I really think that the letter should really come from the receiver who's in charge of everything. Just my opinion.
Valid.
I mean, we really don't have any say over where the money comes from, where it's spent, or how much is included, so I think it's kind of nonsensical for us to enter into this discussion.
Any other discussion?
I think, if I may, Madam Chair, I think by us supporting this and joining almost 120 other communities, we're asking the state to step up and help us, especially since we're a district that does not have a lot of money. We do not have a lot of funds. We don't have clear instruction on how things are going to open up in the fall if we do. And any pitfalls in funding shouldn't be by the state either mandating that all districts join in, a hybrid theory, or just a remote learning. If it's forced upon us, we may not have the funds to do it. So I think by joining and showing our support, maybe hopefully we can keep that number ticking up forward to more districts joining us as well. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Just have a show of hands, all in favor? All opposed? That's four in favor, one opposed.
I'm abstaining.
I included a calendar in your minutes. Normally speaking, our school committee meetings are the second Tuesday of the month. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So that would leave us with, let's see. We don't have one for, we have August, the second Tuesday would be the 11th. On September, the second Tuesday would be the 8th. In October, the second Tuesday would be the 13th. I'm watching for holidays. November, the second Thursday, second Tuesday would be the 10th. In December, it would be the 8th. January would be the 5th, I'm sorry, the 12th. February would be the 9th. March, again, would be the 9th. April would be the 13th. May would be the 11th. And June would be the 8th. I'm not sure what July would be. Does anybody know what July would be?
That would be after this committee.
Oh, that's true. I'm sorry. Yes, this would be correct. Do I hear a motion to set up the calendar for next year?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Could I have a quick question, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is this school calendar, has this been approved by the superintendent?
This is the school calendar that I found on the school website.
Because we don't know what's going to be happening, or when it's going to be happening, how it's going to be happening, so I don't know how we can accept the school calendar.
We are not accepting the school calendar at this point. We are only setting up our dates for our meetings. And there seems to be nothing on this calendar that indicates that these would be, I know that we always end up changing something because of weather or whatever, but we're just, setting up the calendar for the year would normally be at 7 o'clock on the second Tuesday of the month. Any questions? Any discussion? We'll entertain a motion. Mr. Murch and Mr. Thomo. All in favor? Opposed? Now, chairman's announcements. I noticed, since I wasn't paying any attention to this, that we left off the report from the superintendent. I'm very disappointed that the superintendent isn't here. I'm even more disappointed that he didn't send a representative. We have some very serious questions about the opening of school. I'm sure that each one of you will take a moment to discuss that. In the interim, I just want to introduce our new members. We have Chiro DeMiglio.
Hi, thank you.
And we have Lori Angers.
Thank you.
Good to have some new faces, good to be part of a team that wants to work together. I have no other announcements at this moment. Members forum, let's start with Chiro, since he's our first new member.
I received a document from Desiree, I can't pronounce her last name, the principal, regarding, a document drafted by Boston Teachers Union and the...
Could you speak a little louder?
I'm sorry. Drafted by the Boston Teachers Union, the American Federation of Teachers, and I can't read my writing, but anyways, a five-page document with proposals as to how schools can have phased reopenings and, under the pandemic situation, I think it's important to know how we're going to do that. With this past semester being thrown upon students and teachers to do their best to learn and teach in a crisis, I think that there should be some future, although immediate, discussion about how that can happen, or at least how we can participate in guiding or understanding what these proposals are. I don't know if you've all seen the document. I could share it with you individually, by email, or, but, there's several phases regarding the reopening that touch upon what needs to happen for the students and the teachers and the parents to understand how to work together so that we have a safe reopening of the schools, or how to accomplish online learning in a fashion that's beneficial to the students, taking into account parents' work schedules and special needs and things like that. And so, I think this is a discussion that we need to have at some point. Sooner the better, because the schools are supposed to start soon.
Would you like to make a motion that we schedule another meeting with the receiver? So that, since he was on vacation, that we could discuss this in some kind of a public forum?
I could do that. I make a motion that we, using this document, which I can share as a template, discuss that with the receiver.
Do I hear a second?
Second that.
Can we get that electronically? Can we get that all electronically? The document you have?
Yes.
The document, yeah, it was sent to me electronically. I could easily share it at the end of the meeting. I'd like everyone's contact information as well, so that we can share ideas.
Yes, absolutely.
Building a team here.
Could you repeat the motion?
Okay. The motion is to meet at another time with the receiver. We'll set up a meeting with the receiver in some kind of a public forum, so that he can discuss the various issues of opening. When I, when we were on the conference call to the Department of Ed, they gave us three choices. Totally opening the schools, totally at-home, online meetings. I understand that every child in our district will have a Chromebook this year, so at-home learning will be easier than it was last year. There won't be those packets. There will still be issues with Wi-Fi. Or a hybrid system, where some of the students, call them Group A, will go to school one week, and Group B would homeschool, and the next week, Group B would be in class and Group A would homeschool, allowing for distancing.
Pardon me. So this document that I'm asking us to look over, it goes into those details. And I was thinking that prior to the meeting, being a new rookie here, you know, I didn't know what we needed to be able to discuss, but this document was shared with me, and it touches upon many of the ideas that I was thinking about in, you know, in several different, let's see, how many altogether? Seven proposals of different facets of reopening, including special needs and these kind of things. So I'd like to share that with everyone. We can take some time on our own to look it over, discuss offline, and come back with Jeffrey and be able to discuss this.
Busing is going to be a serious issue, too. How are we going to bus the students? You can't put 50 children in a small bus.
And not only that, but that second option that you just mentioned, are they taking into consideration, parents' work? Are they going to be given leeway?
That's one we need a discussion with the receiver about this, because, as you know, we don't have the power to make the decision ourselves.
Of course.
And he's going to have to make it. I'm guessing he's going to have to make it in close talks with the governor and the Department of Ed, but still, it's going to come down to our district. You've been watching Secretary DeVos, and people are saying, you can't make that decision for us, that's a local decision. So it will be locally made, but I'm guessing that there'll be a great deal of input from the governor and from the Department of Ed. I don't, I would like to see the schools, to see how they're being set up, so that we could tell parents, show parents what it's going to look like.
Of course, even that first option. Is it going to have to be some mechanism in place for disinfecting the classes at the end of, I don't know, every period or every day?
In between classes, even. I mean, you know, a student sitting at a table, at a desk that a previous student occupied is subject to infection.
Mr. Murch?
There's actually a YouTube video from Fullerton School District, and I believe it's in North Carolina.
Okay.
That shows how that district is going to be doing their social distance learning on campus, and how things are going to look. And that was, from what I could gather from the video, because I wasn't able to watch the whole thing, but it does seem like it's district-wide. They have, they've traffic-weighted out the hallway, so one direction's going one way, one's going the other, no more than four kids in a bathroom at a time. The cafeteria is completely changed, it's grab your food and go back to class. That's, if, that's probably, from, just from what I can see, that's probably along the lines of how districts are going to be up here. But I do believe that Desi, the Department of Education, has been saying that everything's contingent to the situation when we actually go to open up, so we don't know, we don't really know which way we're going to go, even if we are going to open up, and how we're going to open up. If we do a hybrid, I don't think having the kids at home, having one week go to school and one week they stay at home, if you want to do some sort of a hybrid learning, little elementary school, elementary-age children and the elementary education that needs, that a child needs to have is for the basic skills for them to be able to progress forward. That is one of the biggest areas that this district has struggled, is in the elementary area. We're on the upswing, but it's on the upswing. We haven't swung up all the way. That's progress that's going to be held back. We're going to see that data on the MCAS scores, if we even take them in 2021, because I know they canceled them this year.
Yeah.
But I know the receiver's still going to be monitoring the data with those systems that he's presented in reports before. We're going to see a huge drop. And if we're going to do a hybrid, why don't we have the elementary school students utilizing all of our school buildings in the district, have them on campus with proper distance between the students and the teachers there, the middle schoolers, like 7th and 8th, all the way to 12th grade, they have that basic skill set, or they're supposed to have that basic skill set, they have a different, they have more cognitive ability, it would be easier for them to be able to learn remotely, maybe even offering...
Mr. Murch, can I ask you that we save these questions for the receiver? Because we can talk amongst ourselves, and, you know, I was online, I watched some of the, your questions and parents' answers, and there are just so many questions. We need to get some answers.
My point was, is that, you know, I'm a dad, and I'm here on the committee.
Absolutely.
Every, every one of us has questions, and throughout the, the only thing that I could find that we could even remotely halfway answer it, was a video on YouTube from a school district in North Carolina, who was seeing a huge uptick in COVID cases right now, anyway.
And they're opening portals.
So my, my, my point to that was, there's too many questions that I don't even think the state has answers to, so trying for us to get guidance right now, the, whatever the state has put out, and whatever the district has put out, is probably all that they have. And I think if we're going to have a substantial discussion with the receiver, I think it needs to be on how we approach some of these implementations and how we're going to manage it, so that way we can best ensure that our struggle areas, which have been in elementary reading, in elementary math, are the primary focus, and we're making sure that we have our younger kids and the elementary education as well taken care of, and that we have a system in place to make sure that we can have them come back to where they're supposed to be. That was, that was my point. So thank you for your...
Lori?
I'm not so sure Dr. Villar could give us any insight on anything at this point, because nobody knows what August is going to bring. I mean, yeah, our numbers are here, but they could be here in two weeks. So that's going to be, all three of these options will be probably stay at home. Are they going to open? That's what we have to figure out first, before we have a discussion of hybrid, home, mixed-match, school. And, you know, I'm with you, Martina. The buses are my, as a parent, my biggest concern. I'm lucky I could drive my kids, but not everybody is. They rely on that bus. So, you know, I think to meet with Dr. Villar, I think the state would have to give some more, saying, yes, this is how we're going to do it, let's do it this way, and let's then bring him in and say, what can we do? How do we help?
Mr. Bishop?
I mean, it's, we all watch those. It's a crazy time, and there are no answers. I think that what nobody's really taken into consideration is that schools don't open without the support of the people standing in front of those classrooms. I think the teachers' unions are going to play the biggest part in this discussion. Myself, as, I'm 65 years old, if I was to go back as a building administrator, I would be very, probably unwilling to do that at my age and in my condition. So I think we're going to have to, you know, we can have the best plans in the world, but if we can't put qualified teachers willing to, willing to, you know, do it, I don't know what the answer's going to be. I believe the document you have, Dr. DeMiglio, is based from the Boston Teachers, the Boston Federation of Teachers?
Right, this is just a document that I found, was shared with me by Desiree.
Yeah, I mean, I think the Boston Teachers Federation is obviously the largest in the state, and I think, I think the bus they're driving is going to be the bus we're all getting on. I think that's what, and I'm sure the politicians are aware of that, so, again, we don't have any real direct control over it. At the end of the day, the buck stops with Dr. Villar, whether we have a successful or, hopefully we'll have a successful implementation of whatever plan we put forward, he puts forward. Thank you.
Mr. Bishop, can I add to your point on, you said that you don't know if you would be ready to come back, given your age. It's estimated 30 to 35% of all teachers in the United States are over the age of 55, which is in that high-risk area, so that is some serious, that is something, I agree. If we, if our teachers don't show up, if a third of our teachers don't show up, what, how are we going to teach the kids? So I agree with your point.
I can agree with that, too. I have to go up until my kids' teachers weekly, and they're really nervous, they're hesitant about coming back, which I don't blame them.
I mean, is there liability on these teachers? You know, if a teacher, if a student gets out, you know, you know how some of the kids are.
Yeah.
They get away without their mask, runs down the hall, you just, whose liability is this all going to be? These are, these are questions that we're not going to answer this evening.
And, you know, all due respect, the teacher's very important, but the students, you know, are carriers, they share the disease with their peers, they go home to their grandparents, and then we have spikes in the outbreaks, and this is the other issue.
I just hope whatever decision he comes to, that he has a lot of parental input, because that's where, that's most important, in my opinion. Parental input. Because they know what's best for their child.
Well, he did pass a survey around a few weeks ago, the Southbridge, I mean, Andrew, you should, did you get...
Yeah, I took it.
Yeah, they, for the parents, it was for parents and guardians of the children. I filled it out.
Yeah.
And I'm scared, too, about this whole face mask thing. My littles won't keep a mask on. We need the face shields, I think, to be effective for our students.
My son thinks he's a ninja, he'll wear the mask, no problem. He's good.
Yeah, mine won't. Mine hate it.
If I may, Madam Chair, I wanted to congratulate Ms. Angers and Mr. DeMiglio for their election this year, and to welcome aboard. I came on last year as a newbie, and this is, it's an enriching experience, and I still wouldn't trade it for the world. So, welcome, and I look forward to working with everyone as the year goes forward.
In light of what Mr. Murch said, we're still looking for one candidate to join us. It would be excellent if we could get another parent, because right now, with the COVID thing and everything else that's going on, we really need parent input as to what we should be doing with their children. Of all the things I read today, the one thing I saw that most struck me is whatever we do, we have to do this safely. Safe for our children, safe for our teachers, safe for the parents, safe for the community. So that's, I think is the, is the key byword that we have right now, is that we all stay safe. I think everybody's starting to use that as a, you know, instead of saying, have a nice day, people are starting to say, stay safe, stay safe. Any other comments?
Are we in, are we in forum now?
Hmm?
Where are we? Are we on the citizen, Members Forum?
Yes.
Okay. I can go?
Yes.
Thank you. First of all, I, too, would like to welcome Mrs. Anger and Dr. DeMiglio. It's an important job we have, in spite of the fact that we really don't have any real final say in things, but I think, you know, we can't quit. We can't quit. We had a voice of the people. The people elected us to be, to represent them. And through no one's fault, sitting here, we don't have any control over things, it's just, it's just a ship that sailed, and, but I want to welcome you, and I hope we'll have some good years together. And also, our last meeting was back in March, seems like two lifetimes ago. As I was talking to one of my friends last night, he says, I'm 57 years old, and he says, I feel like I'm, my parents have sent me to my bedroom. And it's true, you can't go anywhere, but that's, that's the way we're all living right now. I want to take a moment to thank two of the members who left the board at the end of the last election cycle. Ms. Ryan was with us for a couple of years, had a lot of good ideas, a lot of input, and a lot of enthusiasm and energy. Ms. has moved on to the town council, as we're probably all aware. I also want to thank Dr. Raymond Page, who served on this board for, I believe, six years, it might have been long. I also want to thank Dr. Raymond Page, who served on this board for, I believe, six years. It might have been longer, but he was also an asset in the school system. Ray's a professor up at WPI. And as I mentioned a couple of, back in that March meeting, he went above and beyond to give to the students and the staff at Southbridge Public Schools. He had two stepchildren that came through the system. And both he and Dr. Domenico were just incredible assets for the students and the staff and the school system and the community. And I want to thank them for their service as well. Thank you.
Mr. Thomo?
Nope.
Anything else?
Also?
Lori, anything else?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Murch, anything else?
I hope everybody stays safe, and I look forward to our next meeting. And hopefully, we can meet with the receiver in between then, to have some answers.
Mr. Di Meglio?
It's actually doctor. I got a PhD in chemistry, but
Doctor.
I intend to share with those who haven't got contact information the document that I explained earlier. So I need both of your contact information, so I can send you that document, so we can discuss it. But many of the things that need to be discussed are touched upon in their proposals, and whether we agree with them, you know, by number or not, there are important issues that I think that we're all thinking about, and so at least it's a basis for us to be able to formulate our own thoughts and concerns locally, you know, in this district. But notwithstanding, I think that online learning efforts need to be addressed, because this is just the first pandemic, and it might not be the last. And I hate to say it, but, you know, I'm sure it won't be. And as an educator at the university level, I learned about the flipped classroom, which is basically online lectures and in-classroom problem-solving and projects. And so to take that model under the circumstances and utilize that in its best form, to be able to educate the students by lecturing online, and whatever schoolroom time that they have will be best utilized solving problems, and to continue to have both, regardless of full-time re-establishment of children in the schools or not. You know, diminishing the time in schools by having them look at lectures, documentaries, informative media that way, and be able to best utilize the time and minimize that time in school, so that people can be phased in and out, as we were saying, alternating schedules, or, you know, offer the children an opportunity to ask questions, which, you know, in my experience, they don't normally do. But still, to give them the opportunity to do that in a classroom setting where it's safe, and not forcing them to sit there in a movie theater fashion during a lecture, which is being given numerous times throughout the United, you know, 3,000 colleges teach organic chemistry the same way. You know, all, many classes are just, you know, year-to-year regurgitated same material, and these things can be collaboratively focused upon by a team of experts that can produce a media form that is entertaining, animated, you know, engaging, that a student sitting there watching it would actually want to, versus sitting in a classroom being distracted by their peers. And so regardless of the pandemic situation, I still think that that's a decent thing to investigate as part of our education system, to give them the opportunity to actually focus without distractions on presented material, and then have the opportunity to ask questions in a, in a social setting, in a classroom setting. So I'll share, I'll share that document, and we can come together with Dr. Valari and see if we can make some headway towards, you know, a nationwide issue. And with any luck, we can even become the example that others will follow and say, "Wow, these folks in Southbridge really are thinking and innovating and working together and finding solutions and solving them." So anyway, thank you for welcoming me. I feel welcomed, and I'm looking forward to working with everyone. Contact information shared, you know, feel free to contact me at any time about anything, ideas. You know, I haven't been on a committee like this ever, but I have problem-solving skills with my academic background, and I'm willing to share them with everyone.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor?